Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have our invocation by Chaplain LaVores Holloway, Lieutenant from the Clayton County Police Department. Be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Correction, Chairman, I'm not a lieutenant.
Yeah, yeah, I thought I was suspicious there.
Especially with my chief being here, I don't want...
You're lieutenant, not your God.
I appreciate that. Let us bow our heads and hearts. Eternal God, we come to you first, giving you thanks for this awesome day, this privilege that you've afforded us to be able to be in this day and to fulfill our purpose and call and destiny. We're grateful unto you, God, that you even allow us to come in a collective gather for a meeting, to discuss business, to discuss life, to discuss quality. We pray, Father, that you would continue to keep your hand on this council, this commissioner. We ask, Father, that you would lead, be the guide over each and every one of them, from our chairman to everyone in each respective district. And we pray, Lord Jesus, that us as constituents, that we will all rally around and seek to make this a county that glorifies you and a county that is unified in the midst of a time where everything seems to be disunified. And so, we come to you now invoking your presence to be upon us all. In your precious name, we pray. Let everyone say amen.
Amen.
Let us say the pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to everyone to the September 4th, 2018 Regular Business Meeting. The first sort of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Warner.
Mr. Chair, I would like to remove a couple items from the consent agenda, beginning with items B and C, as well as item F.
Now, you want to remove them from the consent placement on the regular agenda?
Yes.
All right, I'll suck in a motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue nance.
Are there any further amendments? Mr. Chairman, if I could, please, if I would like to call on Carol Rogers Central Services to explain a change to item A on the consent agenda.
Ms. Rogers.
Good evening. On item A for the consent agenda, I would like to update the information in regards to the renewal for the additional contract period. It should be a renewal for addition, this is with the fourth renewal period instead of this first one for the additional years. So, it was a contract that actually had an initial year of three years, and this is just part of the renewal. So, we're actually at the fourth renewal for the contract, and then we'll have one more additional renewal at that point. And I've given Ms. Davis the supporting documents for it.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we can have a motion to make that, those corrections?
All right, I'll make a motion to enter the correction as Ms. Rogers notated. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue nance.
Are there any further amendments? Here and now, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda with approved amendments, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue nance.
Approval of the August 21st, 2018 Regular Business Meeting minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye. One abstention.
It passes. Four approvals, one abstention.
The board has four proclamations to present this evening. The first proclamation, Clayton County observes September 2018 as National Senior Center Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. Will Ms. Tori Strauter tanks, as well as staff, and any volunteers that are present, please come forward as the commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation? And now, the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes September 2018 as National Senior Center Month. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations. And whereas the Frank Bailey Senior Center, J. Charlie Griswell Senior Center, and Shell Nut Intergenerational Center have acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Clayton County. And whereas, through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of Clayton County to contribute their own health and well-being, and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas the Frank Bailey Senior Center, J. Charlie Griswell Senior Center, and the Shell Nut Intergenerational Center in our county affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2018 to be the National Senior Center Month. We urge Clayton County residents to acknowledge the importance and special contributions of the senior center participants, and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older adults of our community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of September in the year 2018.
And the next proclamation to be presented, Clayton County observes September 2018 as National Kinship Care Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. Now, the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes September 2018 as Kinship Care Month. Whereas Clayton County is steadfast in its commitment to promoting the safety and well-being of our children, and this includes providing a stable household for all youth in which they can be nurtured and succeed. And whereas more than 195,000 children throughout the state of Georgia are raised in kinship families with grandparents or relative caregivers who have stepped forward out of love and loyalty to care for their young relatives, providing them with a sense of connection, security, and ties to their cultural heritage, their family, and their community. And whereas kinship families in Clayton County have a valuable resource in the Kinship Care Resource Center, which provides information, referrals, after-school, summer camp, tutoring, support groups, and a wide array of services, programs, and activities for grandparents and relative caregivers. And whereas Kinship Care Month provides an opportunity to showcase the accomplishments of countless youth throughout Clayton County, who with the unconditional support of grandparents and other relatives have successfully navigated the emotional difficulties of separation for their parents. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2018 to be Kinship Care Month. We urge Clayton County residents to acknowledge the importance and special contributions of the grandparents and relative caregivers. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of September in the year 2018.
And the next proclamation, Clayton County recognizes September 2018 as National Preparedness Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. If we can have the fire chief, as well as other staff members, please come forward. And now, the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes September 2018 as National Preparedness Month. Be disaster-aware, take action to prepare. Whereas National Preparedness Month created an opportunity for every Clayton County citizen to learn more about ways to prepare for all types of emergencies, from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every Clayton County citizen, all individuals, families, churches, and businesses should focus on important steps to prepare for an emergency, including getting a kit, making a plan, being informed, and getting involved to help make preparedness a priority throughout the county. And whereas Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services, Office of Emergency Management, has established a severe weather task force made up of senior officials from Public Safety, Transportation and Development, Information Technology, Clayton County Schools, and Clayton County Board of Health to collaborate on response actions prior to, during, and after severe weather events. And whereas Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services, officials of departments and agencies of the local, state, and federal governments, volunteer and professional associations, and private businesses are working to prepare for, respond to, and recover from all types of emergencies. These activities, along with a vigilant public, contribute to a level of local, state, and national preparedness that is critical to securing our county, state, and our homeland. And whereas Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services developed the Ready Clayton app for smartphones, which allows the user to have instant severe weather notifications, as well as most up-to-date emergency information from county officials. And whereas we observe National Preparedness Month, we urge adults and children to participate in citizen preparedness activities and to look for additional preparedness information at our preparedness website, readyclayton.com, and Georgia Emergency Management Agency Ready website at ready.ga.gov. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Preparedness Month in Clayton County, and recognize the importance of preparing for all potential emergencies, and encourage citizens to participate in weekly activities to test overall preparedness. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of September in the year 2018.
And the final proclamation for this evening, Clayton County recognizes Georgia House District 77 Representative Rhonda Burnow for fostering the connection between the business community and education, as presented by Commissioner Franklin Warner. Now, the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County recognizes Georgia House District 77 Representative Rhonda Burnow. Whereas Rhonda Michelle Burnow has served the Clayton County Public School System for over 21 years as an educator and was elected to serve the great citizens of Clayton County as Georgia House District 77, including the city of Riverdale, including unincorporated portions of Jonesboro, Morrow, and Riverdale as representative. And whereas during her tenure as an educator, she has served as the first community liaison for CCPS, paving the way for programs such as the Day One Initiative, promoting the awareness of beginning the academic year with a positive attitude and a willingness to learn. The Celebrity Reader Program, where community leaders read to 4th graders, the Chick-fil-A Back to School Bash, the Roll Out the Red Carpet Program, and the Principal Partner Day, all of which blended the business community with the school district. And whereas a community servant, she has tapped into the specific needs of Clayton County, taken the lead by founding several viable community organizations, such as the Local Chapter of Men Standing in the Gap 2.0, formerly 500 Men Standing in the Gap, which encourages fathers and men to become actively engaged in the lives of their children and those in the community, as well as its sister organization, 500 Women Standing in the Gap. And whereas she has received several recognitions, the most recent of which include the 2013 National Community and Service Award from President Barack Obama, the 2012 Gold Volunteer Service Award from President Barack Obama, 2011 National School Public Relations Association Golden Achievement Award for Principal Partner Day, and the 2011 and 2009 Georgia School Public Relations Association Gold Award of Excellence for Day One and Principal Partner Day, and the 2010 Clayton County Chamber of Commerce Chairman Award. And therefore, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, ask that you join me in honoring Rhonda Michelle Burnow, District 77 Representative for Georgia House of State Representatives, for her commitment to Clayton County, Clayton County Public Schools, and her community in regards to activism and support. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of September in the year 2018.
Many of you don't know that I was teaching school, and I did not know who Ms. Burnow was. And, but I knew that our school had everything it needed, and it's also, it's really thanks to your effort, because we were able to see community partners in the school. And the reason we did this is because she retired this year. So, we want to thank you for your years of service. Thank you so much.
The board will now consider the consent agenda with the exception of items B, C, and F, which have been removed.
All right, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue nance.
Carol Rogers, Central Services. You can come forward and begin with item B.
Would you like me to take them all at one time?
She could take two together, and then along, B and C, yes, together.
Take B and C together, and the third one on its own.
Separate, please. Thank you.
All right.
The first one is Recommendation for Contract Amendment for RFP 15-11, which is the Architect, Engineer, and Design Service for Clayton County, Georgia. This is a work authorization for District 4 Recreation and Parks Administration Center for a scope change authorization number one. The county negotiated the original proposed amount for the services of $814,361.73, which was submitted by Wiley Wilson, who is located in Atlanta, Georgia. It would, we negotiated that fee down to $541,650, which was a savings to the county of $272,711.73. The recommendation for this request is for a scope change authorization number one is to increase the contract completion time to 30 months, which is at 30 months by an additional 30 days, and the total award amount of the $541,650 by an additional $141,500. This will make a total contract award amount of $683,150, and this is still a total savings to the county of $131,211.73, the original, from the proposed amount. The change is being made due to a scope change. The department recommendation memo and scope change authorization number one are attached for your review and information. Next item is also a recommendation for contract amendment, which is 1511, and is for the war for the, for the District 4 Recreation and Parks Administration Center. This is for a scope change, which is authorization number two. The amount, once again, for the initial savings was $131,211.73. We're now requesting a scope change in the amount of $17,500, and this will put the total award of the contract at $700,650. Once again, with both authorizations, the total to the county savings now is $113,711.73. This is also due to a scope change. The department recommendation memo and scope change authorization number two are attached for your review and information. My request is for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the chairman and his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Do I have a motion? I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Not so much a question, Mr. Chair, but I like, thank you, Ms. Rogers, I like the way that you positioned your wording, because what I'm looking at here, it states that we're increasing it, as you stated, to 141,500. And, but it stated that the proposed amount is one thing, but we're increasing it from what was actually awarded. So, I'm just gonna vote.
Any other questions, statements? I'm hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Four one, it passes.
Next item is Recommendation for Award, and this is for RFP 1802, which is Roadway Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to award to the most responsive and responsible proponent, whose proposal is determined to be most advantageous, meeting the specifications for the county. This is Long Engineering, Inc., located in Atlanta, Georgia. Funding is available through the 2009 and 2015 SPAS programs. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
Once again, Mr. Chair, now, I do have a question this time. On the contract, who actually sat on the selection committee, from what department?
Sure. Anytime that we have a bid that is potentially what we call a technical bid, such as an IT bid, or maybe engineering services, we normally will have all the users from that particular department.
Okay. And let me ask you this, though. Is it normal that you don't have anybody else on that committee except for those specifically from that one department, from the county? Because I know in other jurisdictions, they will sometime pull in someone from another jurisdiction just to give it a different "aye" to ensure that there are no improprieties going on? So, did we do that? Did we put that in place?
No. What we, we are looking at doing that in the future, but normally our procedure was that if it is a technical proposal, we'd normally pull from that user department. So, that's just been how we've moved forward, you know, past. But moving forward, I do think that is on our side to try to seek out other jurisdictions to see if they have the same services, especially when it's technical, such as when we're talking about construction, engineering inspections. And once again, IT kind of follows that same vein, because it's more technical type of proposal.
Okay. So, my concerns are because earlier in this year, as I stated to Mr. COO, we met with some GDOT folks, and at that particular time, we realized that we were operating under a different, I guess, presumption of how things should go. So, I was hoping that we would have had some training sessions before then, or some sessions where we could come back together. And knowing that that has not happened, and then considering the fact that we're only allowing the T and D department to sit on this selection committee, for me, that's of concern. And the other question I have is, what was the SLBE participation on this bid?
It was 20%.
20% was required on it.
Right. And this is a bid where it's based on, as we need the services, so it's not really tied to a dollar amount at this point. It would be tied to as we do task orders, the 20%.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Four one, it passes.
Thank you. The board will now consider the request of Director of Human Resources Pamela Ambles.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to that, I want to go back to something under the consent agenda, and it may be a correction, I'm not sure, under "N," where it says Senator C.'s request for Frank Bailey. And I was trying to figure out how Parks and Recreation get pulled into that.
So, it should be Senior Services?
Yes.
That's a very good question.
Do you know anything about it? Come, if you've got something to say, come on up, Ms. Strauter.
It's just Ms. Tight, we gotta go back and fix it.
It's just something for Senior Services, and it shouldn't have Parks and Rec on it, that's all. It's a correction. So, Madam Clerk, if we could...
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Madam Clerk, if you could correct that under the consent agenda, and, and as a Nora, instead of Parks and Recreation, have Senior Services Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No. Just a title. Ms. Ambles.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. At the August twenty-first Board Meeting, Director Patrick E.G.K. presented a concierge model of customer service to the Board of Commissioners. It is estimated that the implementation of this model will co, will save the county actually ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. In order to implement the concierge model, Human Resources is requesting that we delete the following positions. Residential Plan Examiner, Grade Twenty-One, Step One, forty-two thousand, sixty-five dollars. Development Research Analyst, Grade Twenty-Two, Step One, forty-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Planning and Zoning Technician, Grade Twenty-One, Step One, at forty-two thousand, uh, sixty-five dollars. Permit License Coordinator, Grade Seventeen, Step One, at thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. Permit Technician, Grade Thirteen, Step One, at twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And lastly, Administrative Secretary, Grade Fifteen, Step One, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Human Resources is requesting to add the following positions. Customer Service Concierge Manager at a Grade Twenty-Five, Step One, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Two Customer Service Concierge Associate Two, Grade Twenty-Three, Step One, at forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Customer Service Concierge Associate One, Grade Twenty-Two, Step One, at forty-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. And lastly, Customer Service Concierge Administrative Secretary, Grade Fifteen, Step One, at thirty-one thousand, three hun, I'm sorry, at thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. The positions are civil service protected. All positions are non-exempt, except the Customer Service, uh, Secretary. Well, let me, uh, let me rephrase that. I'm sorry. All of the positions are exempt, except for the Concierge Administrative Secretary.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Unless there's a question for somebody else. Um, I have some questions and I'm gonna go ahead and apologize to everyone. I did miss the last meeting, um, due to having to take my oldest off to college. So, I had some residents ask why was I not here. But know that I did watch the meeting and I've also delved into this a little bit more. And I do have a few questions regarding this where I'm excited about the concierge model because I do like not having to take calls late at night for folks that are waiting for responses at times from departments. But I have a concern. The first concern is, does that mean that this one department will all come underneath the one director once again? Is that, that what, is that what we're doing here?
Let me see all.
I should say one duties, all the duties, cause I'm looking at planning and zoning duties and so forth. So, is that all going to be underneath one department now, one department head?
Yes, ma'am. Um, as it's structured right now, that the concierge model, along with those employees, will be part of the Community Development Department, with understanding the zoning administrator of that position would not answer to the, um, the Community Development Director, that position, as it statutorily mandated, still will be a position that's managed by the Board of Commissioners through the COO's office.
Okay. So, once again, I like the concierge concept, but there are a few concerns I have. The first concern is that we finally gotten this department to where, or the two, to where they're functioning, to where we're not having to take emails. And this board has to admit, all of us have been hit by emails and phone calls and we find ourselves having to get into the day-to-day operations when that's truly, shouldn't be our role. Um, so now, we're not having to do that. That's the first thing I wanna state. The second thing is, as I stated to, um, to you earlier, I have concern about it being under one department again because even though I've only been on the board a year and about seven months now, it seems that for whatever reason, we tend to yo-yo back and forth. So, for me, I want to dig a little deeper because I'm wondering, why do we tend to do that? Is it a personality trait? Is it because we really don't know what best practices are? Is it because we're just shooting to see what worked, what may work, what may not work? But, and it's not just with this division. It seems that we'll make a decision to separate a division, then we will put it back together and separate it again. And, um, I'm just gonna be honest with you. I have concern about, um, again, this being under one particular director. So, uh, I don't know if the efficiency and effectiveness would be able to go forward with this particular model without making sure that certain positions are still in place, i.e., the, um, the support for the zoning and also planning and zoning division itself.
Well, if you will, Commissioner, I would just add that I think one of the, um, the benefits of the model is that we try to ensure that there is the benchmarks that's gonna be put in place. So, not, notwithstanding the leadership in the department, one of the things we try to ensure that, citizens have timeframes at which they should get information back from the department. So, we say business licensing and business permitting should take three to four days. Then we'll continue to look at those benchmarks through our monthly reports. And for whatever reason, if we're not meeting those benchmarks, then we need to question ultimately where our training is or more importantly, whether or not leadership is doing the things that we say we're gonna do.
I understand. And ten days is way too long. And then I've got one more question. Who was at the table for this decision-making process, sir?
For decision-making process?
Or gathering this information for you all to come up with the concierge model. What professional advice did you receive? Did we, well, once again, did we pull in other folks from other areas? Who was at the table?
Well, a couple of things. Um, we did look at other models throughout the country. We didn't just look at what was happening in the metro area. But this, actually, the, the concept was birthed through, um, some additional talks through Commissioner Edmison's office initially. Uh, we've had other representatives that have come to the table to help us with that, to include Community Development. Um, Mr. Starr played a role in, um, providing context to, um, the process. So, we had quite a few individuals that played a role in providing context to the work. And then, of course, provided the board a summary of white paper that talked about the pros and cons to the concept. And now, we're bringing it before the board to make a decision on whether or not we move forward on it.
Let me make sure I heard you correctly. So, you're saying that Commissioner Edmison was involved?
Yes.
That Mr. Wade Starr was involved, but not any of the other commissioners were involved? Or you sat down with us to say, how do you see this before you created the white paper and pushed it out?
Well, the white paper was serving the purpose of providing you context of what the findings were for you to make the determination whether or not we move forward on that process. No different than a lot of other processes that we provide white papers on, that we got context from a particular board member and then you provided us direction on that through a policy decision.
Okay. So, I'm gonna state again, we have somebody that is not contracted with the county, sitting down with a commissioner that is, that we know for a fact. I know for a fact, I've got folks that call me on a day-to-day basis, not as recent, that they get stop notices from certain folks. So, you're telling me that those are the only people that were at the table when you all got together to make this happen?
No, I think your question, what I understood it to be, was that who was part of the process when we came forth with the framework of this decision? There were other entities that played a part in making the decision or providing the framework. But, I mean, in understanding your question, the specifics were, again, started with Commissioner Edmison and, um, Director E.G.K. and then Mr. Starr.
Do either of them have a degree or background in planning and zoning, sir?
Mr. G.K. actually has some background in.
And he's in, in position currently. So, then, once again, we didn't step outside of our circle to make sure that we brought in best practices, to make sure that we're making the best decision to move our county forward.
I guess not, Commissioner.
That's my statement. Thank you.
Any other questions or statements? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's four one, it passes.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, this is a discussion item on Mountain View Moratorium.
Yes, I asked for this, uh, item to be on the agenda. Last three or four weeks, I've been speaking with, uh, property owners, business owners, and other investors who are, who have an interest in the Mountain View area. Of course, they are disgruntled because they can't develop their business or bring a business to Clayton County because we have a moratorium on that area. So, I'm simply asking this board, why are we still, why do we still have a mor, moratorium going on? And I guess, s, s, I need to direct that towards, uh, Commissioner Edmison since he asked for the second moratorium to be continued. Why, why are we still with this moratorium?
Sure. Happy to give as much information as I can. The, uh, the Board of Commissioners, as you recollect, last year, you, last fall unanimously supported the efforts at, uh, an RFP response to the Amazon HQ two. We did so with the Mountain View area as that target market in Clayton County for, uh, the proposed Amazon headquarters. Um, the moratorium, as we voted on, was to, to a, a moratorium on all rezoning and business and grading permits and business licenses in that area, pending the outcome of the Amazon HQ two decision, which, as you know, on a national level, has not been resolved. The, uh, moratorium is currently through December thirty-first. I think I've probably had similar conversations with those same property owners in the recent weeks and months as well. So, I understand where they're coming from. The general idea from the Development Authority is that if Amazon does not come to Atlanta, or more specifically decides not to come to Clayton County, uh, despite it being the best location in the country, um, that, uh, what we learned from the opinions of the property owners and the opinions of regional leaders and just from what our own resources are is that the highest and best use from, for Mountain View area, given its proximity to International Airport, its proximity to the Norfolk Southern Rail Line, that's the MARTA proposed commuter rail, uh, down Old Dixie Road, um, in Charles Grant area, as well as being the international gateway according to ARC's own Blueprint Atlanta and being part of that corporate crescent, is that a highest and best use could include, um, offices such, uh, uses such as offices and retail and entertainment, um, not just warehouses and logistics. Um, so, the Development Authority, uh, put out a bid for a master plan, uh, received, uh, a few different responses. And that master plan, which has had stakeholder input from, um, property owners and, and key stakeholders in the area to large turnout from the public over the last few months, uh, is expected to have its conclusion, um, by October, or by the first of October, if it's on schedule, which will include recommendations for, uh, comprehensive rezoning categories to fit the highest and best use that the stakeholders, property owners, and the regional area recommends that will come before this board. It's my, my understanding and my impression that that, once those, that master plan is done and that those, um, those, uh, those recommended zoning categories are considered by this board, that there will not be any reason to continue the moratorium through then.
Okay. So, I'm a little confused. The moratorium is for the Amazon or for this master plan, which I haven't seen at all? Have you got any information on that?
And that's my point.
Well, you guys are both invited to it. I mean, I personally sent you invites in written.
The master plan?
Yes, sir. I mean, the master plan is a draft right now, but invited to all the key stakeholder meetings and public meetings, yes, sir, you have.
Okay. So, is it for Amazon or for the master plan?
Well, the, the master plan is a backup to whether Amazon calls or not.
See, that's where I'm confused at because, you know, I, I'm not saying you, you're a liar or anything, but you are giving us some misleading information because I got it from good authority from the state that we were out of the running for the Amazon project a long time ago.
So did I, Mr. Chair.
Simply because you tried to circumvent submitting our proposal directly to Amazon and not going through the state. And that comes from the State Department of Economic Development. So, are you saying that's not true?
I haven't received any calls from the State Department of Economic Development or Governor's Office.
You don't know anything about it?
Nope. Wish I did. If you have more information, please share.
Well, better yet, uh, you know, I'm trying to mend some fences because they are, the Department of Economic Development is re, re, really upset with Clayton County for trying to circumvent, circumvent their authority. So, I'm trying to mend fences now. So, I have a meeting with them in a couple of weeks. I would love for you to sit across from them and tell them that, that you were not provided with that information.
I would be happy to. Give me the time and date. I'd be happy to participate.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, um, you know, one of the benefits of having been a business owner for so many years is that there are those who will look out for the best interests of our county, even when we feel, they feel that there is a misstep. And I do concur. I've gotten the same information. And, um, so glad that you are going to have that meeting. And, um, I'm looking forward to us mending those fences because it's time for a new day in Clayton County. It's time to start doing business above board with integrity and ethics and make sure that we follow a pro transparency and we follow a proper procedure. Because the thing about it is, you'll, you are not gonna win alone. You've got to be a part of a team.
So, and again, my, my interest in this is, you know, they, just as you said, the blueprint that Aerotropolis and the ARC has, has outlined, some of the people who I have spoken to want to bring just those development projects to Clayton County. But they can't because this moratorium that this board voted on. And let me ask, uh, Commissioners Hambrick and Gregory, were y'all aware that the state had already x-ed us out when you voted to extend the moratorium?
No. As far as I know, we're, we were still in the running.
Well, trust me, we're out of it and been out of it for a very long time. Is there any other comments on this? Cause I'm not gonna belabor the hour by continuing to go over it because obviously, uh, Mr. Edmison's cut off guard as well.
It's just that no one's been given an official announcement, so.
Yeah, I'm the one hasn't said anything.
No, Clayton County's been given an official announcement that we are out of the running simply because, simply because we did not send our proposal the correct way.
And you know what? Can I may add, it's no simple, um, uh, commissioner. Then both of us have been in the school system. If you don't turn your paper in in time and follow what the teacher asks for you to do, you get a zero. It's just the same thing. It's the same concept.
So, I'm very disappointed in that and, uh, you know, like I said, when I set that meeting, Mr. Edmison, I would love for you to be a part of that because, you know, the, the truth is gonna be known.
Yes.
It's gonna come out. And we all gotta be held accountable for the decisions we make and what we say to the citizens of this county. And we gotta be transparent in all our actions.
That sounds wonderful.
That's all I ask for.
Well, thank you for sharing.
And, and, and if it comes out, when we sit at this meeting and it is known, or it comes out that you did things improperly, then I would ask that you step down from the Development Authority. Would you do that?
Well, let's have that meeting first. I have received, in the Development Authority's office, have received no information whatsoever from the state, including returned phone calls. They haven't even returned phone calls. Um, or, in my capacity here on this Board of Commissioners, no communications whatsoever.
Okay. All right. Unless there's anything else, let's move on.
No.
I will, uh, inform you, sir. Thank you.
Sounds great.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
Attorney Chuck Reed, Legal Department.
Now, would you like me to take these, sir?
Uh, let's do... I think there was one. I would like for you to take them all together unless the board member, any board member would like to take them separately. You remember, y'all good? You good, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. Take them together.
All right. First is Ordinance twenty eighteen eighty-seven, which is an ordinance adopted under the Home Rule Powers granted to Clayton County pursuant to Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three. Amending the Clayton County Code of Ordinance to specifically relevant sections of the Clayton County, Georgia Public Employee Retirement System. To clarify that the term average monthly compensation includes wages earned while employed reported on paychecks issued after separation from service. To clarify that the term employees means full-time employees except for certain categories of individuals who are specifically identified. To clarify the meaning of the term safety personnel. To, to expand the term eligible employees, to include court reporters and superior court law clerks. To amend the term vesting service to consider only contiguous periods of service except as specified. To change the rules related to suspension of benefits on rehire. To require that rehired participants who choose to repay benefits under the plan do so within twenty-four months of the plan's administrators' notice of such repayment opportunity. To provide a death benefit to a participant's spouse if such participant separated from service after age fifty with a vested benefit. To make other clarifying revisions, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance or for other purposes. This is a second reading. I have Ordinance twenty eighteen ninety-six, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended specifically Chapter Fifty, Health and Sanitation, Article One in General Fifty dash two, Board of Health Regulations, Subsection B four concerning swimming pool regulations and substitute in lieu thereof, a new subsection B four to reflect the current Clayton County Board of Health Regulations to repeal, repeal conflicting laws. Clayton County Board of Health Regulations, to repeal, repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide an effective date and for other purposes. Resolution twenty eighteen ninety-three, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to exercise its powers of eminent domain in accordance with the provisions of Georgia laws for the purpose of acquiring certain properties for use by the Clayton County Department of Transportation and Development for the Battle Creek Road widening project from Valley Hill Road to South Lake Parkway, STP dash nine one zero eight dash zero 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 five, to authorize the chairman to execute any and all documents relating thereto, and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. Resolution twenty eighteen eight ninety-four, twenty eighteen dash ninety-four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to exercise its powers of eminent domain in accordance with the provisions of Georgia laws for the purpose of acquiring certain property for use by the Clayton County Department of Transportation and Development for the Battle Creek Road and Mount Zion Boulevard widening project from South Lake Parkway to Somerton Drive, STP dash zero nine one zero eight dash zero 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 four, to authorize the chairman to execute any and all documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. Resolution twenty eighteen ninety-five, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to exercise its powers of eminent domain in accordance with the provisions of Georgia laws for the purpose of acquiring certain property for use by the Clayton County Department of Transportation and Development for the Steel Road at Stagecoach Road Improvements Project, to authorize the chairman to execute any and all documents relating thereto and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intention of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions on any other items? Here and now, those in favor, I, opposed, issue unanimous.
I'd like to have an executive session on just litigation. Litigation, real estate?
I do have one question, not, not for you, Chuck. Jeff, let me talk to her. I just want to ask real quick, do you have any, and I apologize if you don't have this right offhand, but do you have any idea, the widening project from Mount Zion, what's the timeline on that? I mean, I know it never goes like it's supposed to, but, from the Battle Creek up to Somerton?
Off the top of my head?
That's okay. I know you're still during, I mean, this is during the eminent domain, so it's okay.
It, I believe it's about this time next year, we should be certifying with Georgia DOT all the right-of-way, so then they can go forward with the letting of the construction. They're handling all the construction activities on the project.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the last four items are board appointments.
Okay, the first board appointment is appointment to the Board of Health to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Andrea Cheever. Term expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. We need a consumer advocate member as full board appointment. I would like to nominate Dr. Lee Adams, who actually is taking Dr. Cheever's spot at the Mental Health Board. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Next one's appointment to the Library Board to fill the expired term of Benjane Kareem. I hope I said it right. The term is three years, expiring on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, full board appointment. Are there any recommendations? All right, we'll hold that till next time. Next one's also another Library Board to fill the expiring term of Daniel Small. Term is three years, expiring on October second, twenty twenty-one, full board appointment. Any recommendations?
Mr. Chair, may I ask that we hold that one as well? Mr. Small was my appointee, and I know his time has expired, but if we can hold that one as well?
Anybody opposed? Okay, hold them both. Last one is appointment to the Tourism Authority Board to fill the expired term, unexpired term of Sherry Hancock, who resigned. Term expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty, full board appointment. Are there any recommendations?
I do, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recommend Dr. Tanya Clark to fill that position.
Is there a second?
Second.
And those in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. All right, that concludes the appointment session. Yes, Commissioner Warner likes, would like to have a point of privilege.
Mr. Chair, if I can just have a quick point of privilege, as many of you have seen tonight, there are a lot of things that are happening in our county, and come January, it's going to be a new commissioner coming in, and we've got to continue to do business with the great amount, with the highest amount of ethics professionalism as possible. So, what I'm asking Mr. COO of you, and I know that it may not get passed by the board, so I want to ask it on record, that we do not spend any time devoted to any type of projects that have not already been outlined or approved, previously approved by this board, in particular that maybe have not been budgeted, and that if there's any time spent on anything that is brought up that is of importance, that is brought to the entire board for consideration, for the purpose of us being able to move forward in excellency and ensuring that we can operate the county in, in a fashion that is acceptable not only to us as board members, the whole board, but also to the citizens of this county. Can I get you to do that, sir? Just got to make us aware. No, because if, you know, you got to remember, we're, we're paying staff, and that's for everybody, not just you. That's for everybody, and we talked about this, so it wasn't a surprise, but this is for everybody. If anybody on this board, this is asking you to work on something that's outside of what's already been approved, then you spending county time and money on it, and it needs to be brought before the entire board.
Okay, so, before, uh, take the motion, go into executive session, I just want to acknowledge State Rep. Sandra Scott, and of course, we've heard from, we honored State Rep. Rhonda Burno, so let's give them a round. Got somebody to scoreboard?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Come on, help me, help me.
Jasmine Bowles.
Jasmine Bowles.
She is school board-
I'm sorry, she's a let.
School board elect Jasmine.
Yes, glad to have you, glad you're here. All right, is there a motion going to executive session for real estate and litigation?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Uh, second of motion, those in favor, I. I, opposed, it's unanimous. All right, motion to reconvene. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Uh, Mr. Reed?
I'd like to have the board approve a settlement between Renee Burton and the county relating to an accident that occurred on June eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, on Rex Road at or near the intersection with Stagecoach Road and unincorporated Rex Clayton County, Georgia, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, also authorize the chief financial officer to, um, to make any additional, um... My leg, my leg, to make it, uh, measurements as necessary to approve the settlement.
Yes.
To approve the settlement.
Is there a motion?
Settle it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Members of the board, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and count of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, and continuing to talk about and discuss crime and criminal activity in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdictions and control of the Clayton County Police Department, as well as talking about crime and criminal activity all throughout the seven cities in Clayton County for last year, two thousand and seventeen, comparing it to the year before, two thousand sixteen, as well as two thousand and fifteen, and given the full and complete crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers, I will now start with the fourth major crime category, which is forcible rapes. The term is self-explanatory. Last year, two thousand seventeen, in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and control of the Clayton County Police Department, there were one hundred and eighty-three reported cases of forcible rapes, compared to one hundred and sixty-two cases in two thousand sixteen, and eighty-eight reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. Last year, two thousand seventeen, in all of Clayton County, including unincorporated Clayton County, there were a grand total of two hundred and thirteen reported cases of forcible rapes, compared to one hundred and ninety-nine reported cases in two thousand sixteen, and a hundred and six reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. The analysis to date, last year, two thousand seventeen, the number of reported cases of forcible rapes in unincorporated Clayton County increased with an increase of twenty-one from two thousand sixteen, and an increase of nine and five when compared to two thousand and fifteen. However, for the first seven-month time period of January to July this year, two thousand eighteen, the Clayton County Police Department, under the leadership authority command of our Chief of Police Kevin Roberts, who is committed to reducing crime and criminal activity in unincorporated Clayton County, has already seen a decrease of seventeen point nine percent, with eighty-seven incidents of forcible rapes committed to date, down from one hundred and six in the same seven-month time period last year, two thousand and seventeen. Last year, two thousand seventeen, the number of reported cases of forcible rapes in all of Clayton County increased with an increase of fourteen in two thousand and sixteen, and a substantial increase of one hundred and seven when compared to two thousand and fifteen, a commentary. It is my sincere hope that the police departments in Clayton County's seven cities, Riverdale, Marl, Jonesboro, Forest Park, Lake City, College Park, and Lovejoy, are working just as hard as our own Clayton County Police Department are working, and that they are experiencing a reduction in their forcible crime rate when compared to last year, two thousand and seventeen, like our own Clayton County Police Department is experiencing right now, and that they too are having successes as well in reducing overall crime and criminal activity in their respective Clayton County cities, just as our own Clayton County Police Department has already done, and is continuing to do in an, in an unincorporated Clayton County. I will continue to give the crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers on all of the eight major crime categories for unincorporated Clayton County, as well as all of Clayton County, at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting. Good day.
Charmel Lott. Good evening, Charmel Lott. I'm a sixteen-year business owner in Clayton County. I'm here to speak on behalf of the establishment that I have a business in. It's twenty-three hundred Lake Harbor Road in the Lake Harbor Plaza. On August twenty-first, we had a gentleman enter the back door of my establishment. He went to the front of the establishment. He attacked the business owner. He attacked her to the point where he attacked her twice. We called nine one one. Nine one one responded. The lady hung up on me. It took twenty-one minutes for someone to come to the establishment. The same officer who came to our establishment a couple of weeks ago for something not related to this incident, he was the first person there. It took six officers to detain this gentleman. He also attacked, he first, he attacked the owner of the business, then he also attacked another client of mine. We need help. I don't know what to do. I'm here speaking on their behalf. They are Korean. This is not their culture. They're very upset. I'm just want some help. I just want someone to come out there and just explain to these people what's going on, that we're going to get help, as far as this person to never, I don't believe in it, but for him to never walk the face of the earth to hurt someone else again. And I just need help. You know, we don't call nine one one for every incident that occurs and that would supply, but when we did call for the first time, and we needed help, we stood in there for twenty-one minutes without anyone coming, and when they, the district attorney contacted her the other day, and the only thing he could tell us was that that's not their issue. That's not their issue. Call someone else, call someone else. Who are we to call? Who are we to ask for help? Who's going to help us? We're standing in there, this gentleman, obviously, they said that he had some mental issues, and he had a girlfriend with him. She pulled him out the building the first time, the second time, he stood in the back, and he chased another customer in a car. I don't know what to do. You know, we're at, we're within with it, but the only thing I can do tonight is come before you all and ask you all, if one of you guys could take time out your day and go down there and tell this lady who owns this business, who is fearing for her life, and is very upset, that she's going to be okay, that if we call nine one one, that it will be put on the priority list. We were put on the non-priority list. That's what took so long, and the nine one one operator hung up in our face.
Did you talk to Chief Roberts?
No, I didn't, because I did not know who to call.
Okay, where's Chief Roberts at? He's got his hand back there. Every call is recorded through our CAD system, so they can track down who the dispatcher was, and exactly what happened, whether the call was disconnected or, or whatever the situation was, down to the point where how long it took them to respond. So, get with him. His department is very community engaged, and they will go out there and talk to the whole block if they need to, but they'll do what they need to get done. He's in the back. Please see him before you leave.
Alvin Farmer. Alvin Farmer, uh, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. I've been calling you, Commissioner, about this recycling program we need to start in the county. I went to New Jersey and California, and California, they have a great one. I would say whoever's in charge of that need, need to call Orange County and do that, because they're getting, uh, I wrote it down, bottles, plastic, newspapers, cans, even junk mail. I was very impressed with that, because most people don't, uh, take up junk mail, and they, they just collecting everything. But I also want, in New Jersey, they do, uh, cans, newspapers, and things like that, but one of the things that the people are benefiting from it, they get a reduction in their property tax because of the recycling program. Uh, you could, actually, my assistant and I live in Essex County and also in Union County, so you can, uh, check with them and find out about that. So, we need to look into a recycling program for the county. It will create jobs, uh, cut down on our landfill. We will have a cleaner county, and, uh, hopefully, we'll reduce our property taxes because of that. Other part I got was, uh, what I got. Somebody mentioned Scope. I don't know what Scope means in that thing she says. My commis- commissioner, you know, I don't like letters. I don't know what they mean. S-L-B-E?
I apologize.
Not a problem. Let me finish, get my three minutes in. S-L-B-E? I don't know what that means. COO, I know what that mean, but maybe some of the other seniors don't. That means, uh, Chief Operating Officer, correct? Uh, I'm going to give you one and tell you what it mean. Kiss, K-I-S-S. That means keep it simple for seniors. I got a K-I-S-C. That means keep it simple commissioners. Uh, somebody mentioned White Paper. I don't know what White Paper means. Amazon, you remember HQ two, I know what that mean, but maybe somebody don't. That means headquarters too. They bring, they looking for another headquarters. The ARCS, I think, uh, my commissioner mentioned that, or somebody. I don't know what ARCS means, huh? I don't know what that means. So, in the Air Force, oh, this, this is another part. I go around picking up a lot of trash. This is what I'm getting. These are things, cigars, and these things, okay? But y'all people don't know, the fix to the problem, recommended fix, in Air Force, they have recommended fixes, tell every store in Clayton County to charge additional dime every time they sell one of these cigar packs. So, whoever turns them in gets a nickel for the pack and a nickel for the filter. That's my recommendation, and that will make us a clean accountant, because I'm picking a whole lot of them. If you check, uh, the Meadow subdivision, you'll see it's clean because of me, and I'm trying to recruit some people to do that. And, uh, act, oh, another thing, stop using all these acronyms among yourselves, and then you won't bring them to the commission, because I want to know what they mean, because sometimes the acronym, if, if you know the acronym, also know the words. So, K-I-S-S, keep it simple for seniors.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Farmer, I know we've been playing phone tag, but, uh, I'll get with you. Hopefully, I'll make it, but also, at the same token, if you have information about the recycling program, you can forward it to me. I was hoping that our, the person we would hire for our Keep Clayton Beautiful Initiative, but of course, we didn't go that route, so whatever information you have, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I please?
Yes.
Sir, thank you. Address, uh, you are my constituent, so I'm that commissioner you're talking about, so I apologize, and you did tell me you don't like acronyms before, so we'll start with the S-L-B-E, which is the Small Local Business Enterprise Program. It's a program that's designed for small business owners to be able to allow them to have a little bit more of a playing field. I actually had to go through that process years ago, so, um, it allows for small business owners to have an opportunity to do business with our county. And then the White Paper, basically, it's a paper that allows for us to be able to give historical background on any issue or, uh, project, and sometimes it may include some financial, um, background as well, but it's kind of like a report. A white paper is just a term for a report on, um, in the business world, I would say, or in the, in this world. Uh, and then the last thing is headquarters. I think that was it. I don't know about the other acronym. And you know what? For the record, Mr. COO, who is the Chief Operating Officer, he's the king of acronyms. So, sometimes I have to go back and tell him to slow down too, so we're going to get there, though. He helps me out, so we're going to help each other, okay?
Okay, as long as you doing it, longer I brief you, and I'm going to come up with some more, and I'm going to tell you what they mean.
Okay, and be careful picking up that trash, please. That stuff, don't do that. Don't pick up that trash. pick up that trash. Get some gloves, get some gloves.
No, I got a pick-up stick, I got a stick.
Thank you, sir.
One of them grabbers.
Latrice Mitchell.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Latrice Mitchell, Clayton County.
Hi, I'm LaRonda Sutton, Fulton County.
Okay, we are here to introduce a entertainment workforce training program that we're bringing to Clayton County via Clayton County Community Service Authority, it's called We Show Up. It gives unemployed or underemployed individuals an opportunity to enter into the film or entertainment industry. They'll go through a three-week training, and then after that, they will go through a twelve-week paid training on the job, so it gives them an opportunity to enter into the film and entertainment industry, those who wouldn't normally have the opportunity to do so, but this gives them an avenue to do so.
Yes, and I co-founded the program with my partner Deborah Scott of Georgia Stand-Up, and we're very excited about this for Clayton County, it was selected as a pilot program to support infrastructure businesses around the film business, and so instead of focusing on the jobs that are on the set, we support those local vendors, such as the studios, the prop houses, security, film location services, and just, you know, great opportunity overall for those that ordinarily wouldn't have an opportunity to get into the business. Thank you.
Ladies, I would like to speak with y'all, simply because, well, based on the fact, I got a call about y'all today.
Oh, okay.
So I need, we need to have a discussion, a conversation.
Okay, okay, great, and we also met with your Film Office Director, Tamara Patrick, she's awesome, and so this is initiative supported by her as well.
Okay, thank you. Sandra Scott, Representative Sandra Scott.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Chairman, the Vice Chair to the Commissioners. I am State Representative Sandra G. Scott, I represent District Seven and Six over in Rex, and also represent parts of Henry County. I'm here today to express my concern, outrage and disappointment in the Clayton County Board of Elections. I held a press conference about ten days ago about Randolph County Elections Board wanting to close seven out of the nine polling places in Randolph County, and I even went down to support the people there. Then to come back home and receive a phone call about the county that I live in and pay taxes, talking about not having Sunday voting, is ridiculous. There is never a reason to take any day, hour, or minute from people voting. We live in Georgia, what is known as the Dirty South, and the General Assembly has given us to write the vote on Saturday and Sunday, voting, and it is no way we, the citizens of Clayton County, would allow anyone to suppress or take away our voice or our vote on any day. I have to say to the Elections Board, and I will be attending the meeting, to do not mess with or even think about cutting or taking any days away from us on voting. I went to the website to look at the Elections Board minutes, and there's no minutes for the month of August, and then all of the minutes, the only person is talking in the minutes is Ms. Dozier. I'm trying to figure out, any other board members have any conversations during those meetings, because if you go through and you look at the minutes, all the conversations say, Dr. Dozier, Dr. Dozier, Dr. Dozier, that is not the way minutes are taken or done, because I am sure that members on that Elections Board have something to say when questions are asked, and I'm coming to you all, because you all appoint the members of the Board of Elections, and I will ask that you speak with them to make sure that they do not even think about taking away our Sunday voting, because we will not stand for it, because people have fought, bled and died to give us that right, and we will not stand for anyone to take any day, minute, or hour away from our right to vote. Thank you.
Representative, just to set your mind at ease, has been communicated to us that the Elections Director will be submitting a resolution for Saturday and Sunday early voting, so, or advance voting, so that has been taken care of, I hope. Mickey Garber.
Let me say this before I get started there, the only thing worse than blindness, the only thing worse than blindness is having sight with no vision. We do not need ethnic diversity in our county, we already have ethnic diversity, what we need is color coordination. I'm, came here to give you solutions for our garbage problem. Here are opportunities before you. Holiday seasons generate a great deal of garbage. In school, the first holiday coming up is Halloween, the children exercise Halloween and get candy and wrappers, and they should be taught, and it should be expressed, that the garbage goes in the garbage cans. Thanksgiving, another holiday, given the historical value of the holiday generates a great deal of garbage. On those holiday seasons, again, the children enjoy a great meal, the holiday, but they need to be taught that that garbage goes in the garbage can. Opportunities to teach cleanliness, cleanliness is next to godliness, is not taught in school The next holiday that generates a great deal of garbage is Christmas. Again, the birth of our great nation is for religious freedom. Again, cleanliness is next to godliness, and it should be taught that their wrappers go in the garbage can and not on the highway, and the Christmas tree gets to be recycled and keep not thrown away. Another opportunity for our great county to be kept clean is November thirtieth, the birth of our great county, born November thirtieth, eighteen fifty. Please keep Clayton County beautiful and clean. And for Mr. Farmer, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
Bring it on, man, speak on.
Okay, all right, Madam Clerk, that concludes our public comment, and that also concludes our agenda for tonight's meeting, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? A second motion, those in favor, aye. Oppose, unanimous, thank you and good night to all.